All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm Brad Walker, Chair of the Boston Landmarks Commission. I'd like to call this meeting of the Boston Landmarks Commission to order November 12th, 2025 at 6:05 PM. Present are Commissioners Orlando, Baraducci, Hoffman, Ganyo, Ward Hyatt, excuse me, Haney, and myself. Also present are Boston Landmarks Commissioners, Staff Architect Chelsea Blanchard, Director of Design Review Joe Cornish, Architectural Historian Jennifer Gogler, direct, excuse me, my eyes are really bad. Director, is Kathy here? No, Kathy's not here. Deputy Director of the Office of Historic Preservation, Elizabeth Sherva. Anyone else here, Commissioners or staff that I missed? All right. You can participate in this hearing by going to the Zoom meeting link posted in our agenda online or by calling 1-646-828-7666 and entering the meeting ID 1603351609. You may also submit written comments to us via email at blc@boston.gov. In accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, including the March 28th, 2025 amendment extending the suspension of these provisions until June 30th, 2027, we are conducting this meeting online. In order to ensure public access to the deliberations of the Boston Landmarks Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conference. This hearing is being recorded. All conversations between Commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing has been adjourned. If there are any media or elected officials present, I'd ask you at this time to raise your hand in the platform so that you can be unmuted and then identify yourself.
Brad, I do want to note that Commissioner Selena Berrios Milner has joined us.
Thank you and welcome. I am not seeing anybody identifying themselves as media or elected officials. Let me just briefly note the agenda this evening for members of the public who may be waiting for specific agenda items. We're going to start by ratifying the meeting minutes of October 28th. We'll then go on to looking at a petition for the future designation, possible designation of the Jordan Marsh Store downtown. We are going to look at a study report and possibly vote on designation of Quaker Lane downtown as a landmark. Similarly, we're going to look at a study report and possible designation of Ferdinand Blue Store in Roxbury. We then have a couple of advisory design reviews for the full commission tonight, both on Boston Common. One is an accessibility ramp at the Freedom Trail Beacon Mall. And the other is the Boston Common Tadpole Playground. We will then move on to staff updates and then a drum. That looks like a lot, but we'll try to move through it in an orderly way. Let's start with ratification of the meeting minutes. Meeting minutes of October 28th, 2025 were distributed to Commission members prior to this meeting. And that opened the floor to any Commissioner who would like to make an amendment or comment on those meeting minutes. If there are none, I would accept a motion and I second to accept the meeting minutes as presented.
I'll make that motion, Brad.
I'll second. Jeffrey Haney?
Jeffrey Haney. Was that you, Justine?
Ah, yes.
Okay. All members present would be voting Justine Orlando, Commissioner Orlando.
Yes.
Commissioner Baraducci.
Yes.
Commissioner Berrios Milner.
I don't believe I was at that meeting, that October 28th, right?
I think that's right. You can abstain if you'd like.
Abstain, please.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ganyo.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward Hyatt.
Yes.
Commissioner Haney.
Yes.
And I will also abstain because I was not present. So the meeting minutes are accepted. And we move on to our first substantive item, which is the presentation of a petition for the Jordan Marsh Store Downtown Crossing. Just as a reminder to people who maybe aren't here as frequently as everyone else, it's sort of a three-part process to become a Boston landmark. The first is a petition to the Landmarks Commission, which is where we are this evening. It just means we would accept or not accept a petition. At a future date, there would be a study report under consideration. And then if that study report were accepted, there would be a vote on designation. So this is not a vote on designation tonight, and there is no study report. The purpose of the preliminary hearing is to provide petitioners with the opportunity to present to the Boston Landmarks Commission why a property should be considered for designation. If after the presentation, the Commission accepts the petition, written materials and additional documentation on the building would be welcomed by the Commission to help in the preparation of the study report. If the Commission finds cause to reject the petition without further study, it may do so by simple majority vote, provided that its reasons for so acting are stated in the decision and are furnished in writing to the petitioners. I will now invite the petitioner's spokesperson to briefly present the reasons for the petition with respect to the significance of the building and why it should be considered for designation. And I think that's going to be Jeff Cronin. Am I correct in that?
You are correct.
Jeff, the floor is yours.
Yep.
Assuming you're able to unmute yourself if you're not, raise your hand or something.
Okay.
Here you are.
There we go. Okay. Okay. On behalf of the petitioners, I want to thank the staff for their help and support. And also in particular, my friend Chris Sawyer, who has a passionate interest in historic department stores, and Keith Morgan for his description of the building in the S A H Archipedia was a sort of a prime mover in animating us to come forward with this petition. And the, in this first slide, as you can see, that it's, I posted some images of the Jordan Marsh Store going back 50 years ago. And it seems to me it was appropriate to begin with that because the effort to save the brownstone facade of Nathaniel Bradley Renaissance Revival Store on Washington Street, which was unsuccessful, but that was a pivotal moment and catalyst for creation of the Boston Landmarks Commission, which of course has its 50th anniversary next year. And the flagship store, which is an aerial view taken from courtesy of Boston Globe, is also celebrating its 75th anniversary this year. And that's one of the very few department stores in the country that's been a continuous use, urban department store at that time. Next slide, please. Okay. And this slide, this is in response to discussion that occurred recently on the survey ranking. We have outlined here the, in red, the footprint of the building, which was built in three phases between 1947 and 1958, where three of five phases were built. The final two were not completed. But that footprint is shown here on Summer Street and Chauncey Street. And the portion on Washington Street shown on the upper left, that is not included in our petition. That was added in 1978. And this view is the most commonly seen one. And this is as taken from last summer. The, some of the air handling equipment on the roof is new, but the curved piece on the left side is original to the building. Next slide, please. This announcement goes back to 1947 and all the fanfare that occurred when it was announced as the world's best store. And the original conception was to have block to block from Washington Street to Chauncey Street, 15 stories above ground and two stories below grade, making it what would have been one of the world's largest department stores. And it was claiming to be the largest one. Well, that belonged to the Hudson Store, you can see it on the upper left hand corner. Its construction began in 1949, and this was the, some newspaper images from the groundbreaking. And it was a huge affair, as you can see, it reminds me somewhat of a, of a watching of a battleship or war bond drive with all the fanfare that company that, including a telegram from President Truman. And Leverett Salt and Star was the speaker at the dedication for that. And I don't think that too many of us remaining could remember him as our senator. The construction of this store coincided with the John Hancock Tower in the Back Bay on Clarendon Street. And those were the two big post-war developments in Boston. And this was the first building in the downtown business area in 35 years that had been built. And that explains much of the interest in it. And there was also a Centennial Plate commissioned in 1951. It's still available on eBay for $59. Okay, next slide, please. And I included this slide because it's sort of overview of some of the cultural traditions that were so well-known in Boston and surrounding area. These are traditions focusing on this building in particular. And as we suggest, I believe in the petition, this was among the best-known buildings in Boston for generations. Many people who did not know King's Chapel, everyone knew Jordan Marsh Building. So just to quickly go through some of these things, we have the Enchanted Village, which was a huge holiday attraction. And there are spectacular displays, which were outside of New York and Chicago, one of the best in the country. The Masha Jordan Fashion Show, the rooftop restaurant, the bridal shop, the muffins, all kinds of things, a place to buy Red Sox tickets. And these things make us somewhat of nostalgia, but there was a real affection for people who grew up in New England to, to this store, to this. And the image in the lower right-hand corner is from 1954. And that shows the first phase, the first module that was built with just one day along Summer Street. Next slide, please. And here I've cited some, these are some of the sources that were, may have been used to influence the building. A very obvious one is from the, in the top, in the middle, the May Company Store in Los Angeles. The rounded corner for the May Department Store was by A C Martin in 1939 that was completed. It's very much of an art deco feature, the circular glass cylinders. And also the dental department store outside of London, the two images on the right, appear to have some strong correlation and designer influence in the Georgian revival features. And at this time, with international style with reigning, there were very few department stores that were embracing historicism or used it. Sighted two here were the Montgomery Ward Stores in the bottom, in the lower left. Some of the Woodwood and Lothrup Stores in suburban Maryland. Next slide, please. Okay. And these are some examples of the work of Perry Hepburn Shaw, the Boston-based firm. They specialized for decades in doing Georgian revival work, beginning in 1930 with a 12-year project in the reconstruction restoration of Colonial Williamsburg. And Robert C. Dean, who was the lead architect for the Jordan Marsh Store, began his career with Perry Shaw Hepburn in 1930, and he retired in 1991. It's a remarkable 61-year career. Of the images here, the two in the right-hand side, the top one is the Williamsburg Lodge. Below that, the Wellesley High School, which were demolished, and the Kresge Building and Harvard Business School also demolished. And there's a better image on the lower left of what was proposed, an illustration for the full build-out of the Jordan Marsh Store. Next image, these, these are sampling of where Jordan Marsh was going and where department store architecture was going in the late 1940s into the 1950s. Interesting in the lower middle photograph, black and white, that was a work of Perry Hepburn Shaw in Grand Rapids, Michigan, 1949. That was under construction concurrently with Jordan Marsh Store in Boston. And there are some connections, the portholes, canopies that were peering in the Jordan Marsh Store. And very interestingly, Jordan Marsh also produced the most innovative, most groundbreaking department store in the country in Primingham in 1951, the Flying Saucer and Shopper's World, sadly demolished in 1996. But there's an anomaly, the same store doing the most historicist conservative design was also doing the most innovative one in the country. And in the final slide, please, just summarize here some of the reasons why I believe this meets a criteria for designation, but also could be considered at the statewide level of significance. I recognize that that was not the decision of the Commission in the survey ranking or the recommendation from the staff. But if we go through these, and I won't read them, but just the, as I mentioned before, 75 years of continuous operation, it puts it in a very elite company with a Marshall Field Store in Chicago, in Nordstrom's in Seattle. There are five of those stores that still remain. It was the largest department store in New England, and it was, the red brick became the signature identifier of Jordan Marsh Stores. It had all of the cultural traditions that were unique to this store and were not replicated other places that meant a lot to people who grew up here. And it was the first significant building in the downtown in 35 years. And it was a work of Perry Shaw Hepburn. So, and also I believe we have five or six letters submitted from architectural historians and one restoration architect from the AIA Historic Resources Committee in support of the designation and of your consideration of the petition. So thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I'd now like to ask, I think Jennifer Gogler, has there been any written comment from the owner of this property?
Yes. The Commission has received a letter from the property owner, which was circulated to the Commissioners before the hearing, and I will now read it into the record. Regarding the Jordan Marsh Flagship Store at One Summer Street, Boston, Petition 304.25. Dear Ms. Sherva, the Markley Group, through its affiliate, Markley One Summer Street LLC, is the owner of the building historically known as the Jordan Marsh Department Store at One Summer Street in downtown Boston. We received your notice dated October 31st, 2025, that a petition has been filed with the Boston Landmarks Commission, requesting that the Jordan Marsh Building be considered for potential landmark designation. We understand that a preliminary hearing on the petition has been scheduled for November 12th, at which time the BLC will determine whether or not to accept the petition for further study. We further understand that as the owner, we will not have the opportunity to testify at the hearing, but that the Commission will accept our written comments. We therefore respectfully request that this letter be read into the record at the hearing. We question the building's eligibility for landmark designation. The BLC's 1980 survey form for the building states that, quote, "The present Jordan Marsh Store consists of two principal buildings, neither of which is a good example of contemporary design. The newest section in particular is out of scale with the Washington street, streetscape, and makes no effort to relate to its urban setting," end quote. I believe that last sentence refers to the portion of the building that is not being considered in this petition. Sorry, that was an aside. Back to the letter. The BLC's survey form for the building was updated in 2009 by two experienced preservation consultants, one of which, Lynn Smilage, is the former chairperson of the BLC. The 2009 update includes the following statements. Quote, "The present monumental shopping complex is not a distinguished example of its period or its architects. The two parts are visually disjointed, and while the older section is a quirky period piece, the newer section does little to enliven the streetscape. One architectural historian describes the 1940s design as absurd modernistic federal revival style." That would be Shantucci. Another commentator compares it to an ocean liner rendered with oversized Georgian motifs, and that was from Lyndon, end quote. As the owner of the property, we have serious concerns about the potential designation of the property as a landmark. In addition to the building's ground floor retail space, the building is best known nationally and internationally as New England's largest multi-tenant, mission-critical telecommunications and data center facility, housing over 200 leading financial and insurance companies, healthcare providers, universities, government services, science and technology firms, and the Boston Internet Exchange. The ability to make necessary changes to the building without being hindered by a design review process is critical to the daily operations of the data center and the ability to provide ever-changing solutions to the mission-critical needs of these essential service providers. Based on the concerns outlined above and the descriptions of the building as presented in the BLC survey form, we respectfully request that the Commission not accept the petition for the building for further study. Thank you for accepting these written comments and for entering them into the record. Sincerely, Devon S. Cutchins, Chief Legal Officer and Senior Vice President. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Let me just do a couple of housekeeping things. I think while we were in the middle of this, we were joined by Kathy Catarides, who is the Director of the Office of Historic Preservation, and also by Commissioner Hart. Thank you. I see someone named Ed Flynn, who I assume is Counselor Ed Flynn, also is joined with us and has his hand raised. I will note at this time, however, that during a petition acceptance hearing, which is what this is, we don't take public comment or comment from public officials. So I would now invite Commissioners to ask questions or provide comments on the petition itself. Give it a minute. Anyone want to unmute themselves?
So Brad.
Hi.
I have not had time to go through the document, but I did want to note that the MBTA has a presence in basement building. And it has an obvious stake in voting. I don't know if you have received formal correspondence from it yet, but I think there'll be something coming. So, just wanted to flag that. We should note that in due report as well.
And I would assume if we're going to move ahead to prepare a study report, that's an important consideration. Other Commissioner comments, questions?
Jeff Haney here. Want to comment?
Sure.
So I think the study is just, is just restricted to the facade, the outside, the exterior of the building. Is that correct?
That will, that will be clarified in a study report if we accept a petition for consideration.
I think we can say, however, the petition was indicated it was only requesting exterior designation. So what elements of the exterior, I think, would be studied in the study report? But I don't believe we would consider interior designation. That has not been requested. Thank you.
Yeah. So I think the owner's letter didn't make a distinction. Maybe, maybe just, maybe just read it too quickly, but I think we were just thinking about the outside of the building.
And, and not even the outside of the entire building?
Correct, yes. Now, I've been thinking about this, and I think most of the Commissioners were positive and continuing to report on this. And I think it came down to, you know, what, what defines architecture? And that's, you know, the three were truly the components of firmness, commodity, and delight. And the building certainly has all of these, but I think the light is a little bit off the scale, which always has made me smile about this building. And I don't know. I would like, I would like to see it, at least the outside cared for and preserved. You know, the, the Eiffel Tower was what considered one of the ugliest things that were built for a long time, and now it's not. So I think times and tastes have changed over time. And I think if we lose it, it really cannot be replicated. That's what I got.
Anybody else on the, on the study report itself? I'm sorry, the petition itself, getting ahead of myself. Commissioner Orlando?
Uh, yeah, I think that when this building was discussed as part of the survey rating review, and then again, tonight, it seems like there's been a lot of discussion about different areas of the building. I think we spent a lot of time on this during the survey report or the survey rating. So I think at a minimum, moving forward with a study report that will very clearly define the historic areas, potentially a landmarked area versus the building in its entirety. I, I think that that effort is, is very much so worth it and the, and the time so that everyone can start to speak a little bit more specifically about the building and the different components of it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Ganyo, you look like maybe you want to say something or?
Oh, no, sir. That was head nods in agreement with Commissioner Orlando. She said, thank you, Justine.
Before I ask if there is a motion to accept the petition, I want to go back to a little housekeeping because it looks like somebody called Boston 25 News is on the call earlier. I'll repeat my earlier request that if there are members of the press here, would you please raise your hand and be unmuted and identify yourself? Boston 25 News, are you in fact press? All right. Perhaps there.
Liz, I think in that case, we, I don't know if we remove the person from the meeting if they don't respond. I'm not sure. Joe, do you have a?
I asked them to unmute. We'll ask them again if.
I also asked.
Yeah, okay. I don't think we need to remove them.
Okay.
All right. If there are no further Commissioner comments or questions, I'm going to ask if there is a motion to accept the petition.
I'll make that motion.
I think I heard Justine Orlando and Jeff Haney. Did I also hear you?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll take you a second if you don't mind.
I'll second that.
All right. Again, all Commissioners present would be voting, so.
Brad.
Yes.
Did we like here from Congress?
We don't take public comment even from public officials at this level of the hearing, but thank you, Chris.
Okay.
So moving to the vote, Commissioner Orlando.
Yes.
Commissioner Baraducci.
Yes.
Commissioner Barrios Milner.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonyo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yeah.
Commissioner Ward Hyatt?
Yes.
Commissioner Haney?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Let me go back to the notes here. So if the commissioners vote to accept a petition for further study, which we have, it is added to the list of properties requiring the preparation of a study report. The purpose of a study report is to examine the property's architectural and historical significance as it relates to criteria for designation. The amount of time it takes to complete a study report varies depending on available funding and staff and the level of the threat to the property. Once it is completed, the study report will be discussed at a public hearing, and public feedback, including comments from the owner, would be heard by the commission. After the conclusion, a public testimony, the commission would vote on whether or not to designate the property. If the commission votes to designate the proposed designation, that requires the review and approval of the mayor and city council. So that concludes the Jordan Marsh portion of the agenda. I'm going to move on to Quaker Lane. Tonight, we're sort of one step beyond where we just were with Jordan Marsh in that we're going to look at the presentation of a study report, vote potentially to accept the study report and vote potentially to designate as a landmark. The Boston Landmarks Commission is required to hold a public hearing on all proposed designations following the completion of a study report, which describes the significance of the property and the standards of criteria by which future changes can be evaluated. The study report is made available for public review and comment for at least three weeks before the hearing. The purpose of the hearing is to hear the findings of the study report, to hear testimony from interested parties, and to vote on the proposed designation unless the chair decides to extend the vote to a later date so the commission can acquire more information. I would now ask a member of the Boston Landmarks Commission staff to make a brief presentation summarizing the findings of the study report, and I think, again, that's going to be Jennifer Gallo.
Yes. On May 14, 1985, the Boston Landmarks Commission accepted a petition to study the designation of Quaker Lane in downtown Boston as a landmark under Chapter 772 of the Acts of 1975 as amended. And on October 22, 2025, the Boston Landmarks Commission posted a study report on the proposed landmark. I will now present a brief summary from that study report. So Quaker Lane, as you can see here outlined on the map, is a public way owned by the Department of Public Works and the city of the city of Boston. It is located in the block bounded by State, Congress, Water, and Devonshire Streets. And it is historically significant as one part of it is the remnant of one of the earliest streets of Boston dating back to 1632. Next slide, please. Here we see contemporary views of Quaker Lane, which reads as an alley today. Parts of it are open to vehicular traffic and parts are pedestrian only. It is lined by late 19th and early 20th century buildings with one building that was built in 2019. And paving materials include asphalt, concrete block pavers, granite, and bluestone. Next slide. The earliest section of Quaker Lane was laid out circa 1632, as you see on the top left. But the full streetscape that became today's Quaker Lane actually developed over four phases between roughly the mid 17th and the mid 19th centuries. And so here, this is included in the study report, but we just have a diagram showing how those pieces kind of developed over time. And if you go to the next slide, we've got some of the historic maps kind of showing. So this is a map of Boston. It's a map depicting Boston in 1648. It was drawn in 1919. But this is kind of this backwards L shape was the beginning. This is the earliest section of Quaker Lane that does date back to, like we said, the 1630s. Next slide, please. 1798, you can see toward the bottom of the circle, something called Reyes's Court, which would later be known as Salter's Court. So that was a sort of late 1700s addition to the area. Next slide. Then in 1814, we've got another sort of connector piece that extends to Congress Street. And you can see here the Exchange Coffee House is labeled. So that was an important building that this kind of alley or streetscape developed around. And the next slide, please. So at one point, this was named Exchange Square. This is a map in 1840, and we kind of see now the completion of that full shape as it is today. So as you can see, there was, I think, at one point, a belief that this Quaker Lane dated back to the 1600s, but it really dates from the 1600s to the mid 1800s. As the street expanded over time, it also covered the sites of multiple former buildings. So some of those archaeological traces may still survive under the street. And the streetway may potentially preserve intact archaeological deposits, including a historic burying ground. But we did talk to Joe Bagley, the city archaeologist. And when he looked at it closer, he said, actually, that historic burying ground would not be located within the footprint of the Quaker Lane as we see it today. Next slide, please. So basically, there is some potential for archaeological deposits in the area, but nothing that our city archaeologist was specifically concerned about. Also, as you can see here, the original buildings that shaped Quaker Lane in the 17th and 18th centuries are no longer extant. And the lane is currently abutted by these taller buildings dating from the late 19th and early 20th centuries. Next slide, please. Materially, there's some different materials here. So some sections have granite block and bluestone pavement, and those materials do date to the mid to late 19th century. As you can kind of make out here, the color of the granite can differ widely, and it includes sort of a mid to dark gray, a gray with a brownish tint and like a pinkish tint. And most of the granite stones also retain evidence of deep scoring, which was probably done to improve traction. And there's several different styles of scoring. You can see here both like cross hatching and diagonal hatching. Next slide, please. However, in looking into recent history of the BLC, we were reminded of this presentation that was actually given to the BLC in April of 2018 by Related Beal. And if you can tell here, there's these four different colors of granite. The red and orange are in their original location, but the blue and the yellow lengths of granite were actually relocated to inside of Quaker Lane when some work was being done on that new building. And so more than half of the granite blocks are actually not in their original location anymore. Next slide, please. And so when we looked at the criteria, we concluded at the staff level that we do not feel that Quaker Lane meets the criteria for designation as established in Chapter 772. It is not included in the National Register. We did not feel that it, you know, reflects an important time in history because it was developed over so many, you know, 200 years. We did not find significant historical persons associated with it. And also under D, even just as an old streetscape, it is not the only street layout in the area that has 17th century origins. You could say the same thing about State Street or Washington or North Streets. The extant buildings are, date back to, you know, no earlier than 1894. So the lane is not an example of a first period or colonial streetscape. And on a material level, there are other instances of large quarried granite block pavers in the commercial district and the waterfront, and bluestone paving is located throughout the city. So we did not feel that these 19th century paving materials were sufficient to merit landmark designation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jen. Do we have any public feedback on this? Written public feedback?
We did not receive written public feedback. We did attend a meeting of the Massachusetts Historical Commission earlier today where they voted to concur with staff recommendations.
Okay. I'm going to read this next part because I find it tedious, but it's important that we do this correctly. We are going to move on to verbal testimony. And we have to do that in a specific order because of our regulations. So I will be calling on categories of speakers and asking you to raise your hand in the Zoom platform so that you can be heard when your category is called. So if you do want to speak, be ready. First, would any legal counsel representing any participant in the hearing, please identify yourself for the record tonight? And you need to raise your hand so you can be unmuted. Not seeing any legal counsel, let me read the order in which we will take testimony. And that is first from elected officials, then from Planning Department and Massachusetts Historical Commission, who have statutory review responsibility, then from the property owner, then from those speaking or submitting written testimony at the hearing in support of designation, then from those speaking or submitting written testimony at the hearing in opposition to designation, then from those who wish to comment, but not necessarily in support or in opposition to designation, and then from anyone with questions or rebuttals on the prior testimony. Again, if you wish to speak when I call in your category, please raise your hand in the platform using Raise Your Hand button or press star nine if you're calling in on the phone line. Then please state your name, your address, your relationship to the property. Public comment will be limited to five minutes for the petitioner spokesman and the owner, if there is an owner, and two minutes per person for others. Comments should be focused on the validity of the study report and the criteria for designation. Will not take any comments about ownership, use, or future development plan. It might help if I just note, because this is a little bit unusual for us, that again, it's a two-vote process. The commission can vote to accept the study report, which would be a record of the findings of the study report, and then still move on to vote to or to decline to vote to designate, which is the staff recommendation. So I will go back through my list and start at the top. Are there any elected officials who wish to comment at this time? Anyone from the Boston Planning Department or the Massachusetts Historic Commission? Anyone representing the property owner? Guess might be the city. Anyone wishing to speak or submit written testimony in support of designation? Anyone wishing to speak or submit written testimony in opposition to designation? Anyone wishing to comment, not necessarily in support or in opposition? Anyone with any questions or rebuttals to testimony, which we have not had? All right. We have no public comment. I'm going to turn it over to commissioners to ask questions or comment on the study report. No comments, questions, concerns? There are not. I will entertain a motion to accept the study report.
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Gonyo? Is there a second?
I'll second.
That was Commissioner Orlando?
Yes.
All right, all commissioners present would be voting against to accept the study report. Commissioner Orlando?
Yes.
Commissioner Baraducci?
Yes.
Commissioner Barrios Milner?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonyo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward Hyatt?
Yes.
Commissioner Haney?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So the study report is accepted. According to the Boston Landmarks Commission Regulations, written statements may be submitted for the record up until three working days following the hearing to the Boston Landmarks Commission at 20 City Hall Avenue, Boston, Massachusetts, 02108. Statements may also be sent to blc@boston.gov. An extension of time for submitting written testimony and a postponement of the designation vote may be granted tonight at the chair's discretion. Given comments or lack thereof we've had, I'm not going to extend the vote. The public record of this hearing is available upon advance request to the Boston Landmarks Commission staff at blc@boston.gov. Given the written and verbal testimony received about this study report, I believe the commission has information tonight to proceed to a vote. Even though the commission would vote on a designation tonight, staff would continue to accept written testimony for the record up until this Friday, November 14 at 5:00 PM. All right, so we would now move on to entertain a motion to accept the designation of Quaker Lane as a Boston landmark. So we're not, it's not a... We don't take a vote to not accept. It's a vote to accept, which either passes or fails. Is there such a motion to accept the designation?
Jeff Haney makes that motion?
All right, I'll second it.
David?
Commissioner Baraducci? Again, all commissioners voting to designate as a landmark. Commissioner Orlando?
No.
Commissioner Baraducci? I think you're muted, David.
Sorry, yes.
Commissioner Barrios Milner?
No.
Commissioner Hoffman?
No.
Commissioner Gonyo?
No.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward Hyatt?
No.
Commissioner Haney?
Don't vote no.
No. I also vote no. Six votes are required to designate, so the motion fails. The commission having voted not to designate the landmark this evening means the petition is denied, and a landmark designation may not be reconsidered for at least two years. Thank you, and that concludes this portion of tonight's hearing. We're going to move on to the next one. Similar process, Ferdinand Blue Store in Roxbury. Tonight, we will be considering the designation of Ferdinand Blue Store, the Bruce C. Bowling Building, as a Boston landmark. The Boston Landmarks Commission is required to hold a public hearing on all proposed designations following the completion of a study report, which describes the significance of the property and the standards and criteria by which future changes can be evaluated. The study report is made available for public review and comment for at least three weeks prior to the hearing. Purpose of the hearing is to hear the findings of the study report, to hear testimony from interested parties, and to vote on the proposed designation unless the chair decides to extend the vote to a later date so the commission can acquire more information. I would now ask a member of the Boston Landmarks Commission staff to make a brief presentation summarizing the findings of the study report. Jen, thank you for doing all the heavy lifting.
Thank you. On April 1, 1989, the Boston Landmarks Commission accepted a petition to study the designation of the Ferdinand's Blue Store in Roxbury as a landmark under Chapter 772 of the Acts of 1975 as amended. On October 22, 2025, the BLC posted a study report on the proposed landmark, and I will now present a brief summary from that study report. Renowned furniture retailer Ferdinand's Blue Store contributed significantly to the development of Roxbury's principal business district, Dudley Square, now called Nubian Square, during the late 19th century and into the mid 20th centuries. The store's presence was one of the most notable in Dudley Square as the area evolved into a dense The store's presence was one of the most notable in Dudley Square as the area evolved into a dense urban commercial and transportation center. The business made a name for itself throughout greater Boston and the New England region. Next slide. Ferdinand's Blue Store was purpose-built in eighteen ninety-five as a showroom and department store for furniture, home decor items, and housewares. Next slide. The retailer operated as a family-run business until the store was sold in nineteen seventy-one. Within a few years, the building was vacant. In two thousand and seven, the Boston Redevelopment Authority acquired the building as part of Mayor Thomas Menino's Dudley Vision Project to gut the Ferdinand's interior, rebuild it as a municipal space, and preserve and adapt the facade. Next slide. In two thousand and eight, the team of Meccanu and Sasaki won the design competition for the project, and the transformation was completed during the administration of Mayor Martin J. Walsh. Although the facade of the store is the only part that remains, it is a distinctive remnant of a late nineteenth-century department store that is representative of a physical link to the past, documenting the rise of Dudley Station and the square as an important turn of the twentieth-century transportation and commercial center. Next slide, please. Architect John Lyman Faxon, who practiced from the eighteen seventies to early nineteen hundreds, designed the five-story department store using a blend of Baroque and Renaissance revival stylistic elements. The store was situated at a prominent intersection of Washington and Warren Streets in the center of Dudley or now Nubian Square in the main business district of Roxbury, and Faxon's design included large metal-framed display windows surrounded by Doric pilasters and limestone entablature. Of special note, as you see here, are the oversized Oculus windows with ornate surrounds that distinguish the end and the central bays of levels two and five. Next slide, please. In two thousand and fourteen, Mayor Walsh recommended to the city council that the structure be named the Bruce C Bowling Municipal Building in honor of the city council's first black president. The building opened to the public in April twenty fifteen. It is the headquarters today of the Boston Public Schools and also contains generous space for retail businesses and nonprofits. Next slide. So Ferdinand's Blue Store, which is today part of the Bruce C Bowling Building, we conclude meets criteria A, B, and D for designation as a landmark as established in chapter seven seventy-two. It is listed as a contributing resource to the Dudley Station National Register Historic District. It does have an outstanding contribution to cultural, economic, and social history as the former Ferdinand's Blue Store, which contributed significantly to the development of the area. And also architecturally, we find it to be very distinctive and worthy of designation. Therefore, we recommend that the commission designate the store as a landmark. Next slide, please. And we recommend that the effect of the designation is that review by the B L C or commission staff would be required for any proposed alterations to the following elements. The historic facade of the former Ferdinand's Blue Store, as well as the airspace above the five-story portion of the Bruce C Bowling Building facing the intersection of Washington and Warren Streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Do we have any written comment on this public comment?
We did not receive any written public feedback. However, again, the Massachusetts Historical Commission voted today to acknowledge receipt of the study report, but to advise the B L C that M H C does not consider faciectomy a proper preservation treatment. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to public comment. I'll read the same thing I read a few minutes ago about the order in which we take public comment. And then I'll come back and read the categories and ask anyone in that category to raise your hand or unmute yourself. So first, we'll hear from elected officials. Then we'll hear from the Planning Department and the Massachusetts Historic Commission. We have statutory responsibility. We'll hear from the property owner, from those speaking or submitting written testimony at the hearing in support of designation. From those speaking or submitting written testimony at the hearing in opposition to designation. From those wishing to comment, not necessarily in support or in opposition to designation. And from anyone else with questions on rebuttals on the prior testimony. Again, if you wish to speak when I call your category, raise your hand in the Zoom platform using your raise your hand button or press star nine if you're calling on a phone line. When I call on you, please state your name and address and relationship to the property. Public comment is limited to five minutes for the petitioner spokesperson and the owner and two minutes per person for others. Comments should be focused on the validity of the study report and the criteria for designation. We do not take comments about ownership, use, or future development plan. Let me go to the list and call on people in order. Are there any public officials who wish to comment on this? Anyone from the Boston Planning Department or the Massachusetts Historic Commission? Anyone representing the property owner? Anyone wishing to speak tonight in support of designation? Anyone wishing to speak tonight in opposition to designation? Anyone wishing to comment, not necessarily in support or in opposition? All right, I'm going to conclude that we do not have public comment. And at this time, I invite commissioners to ask questions or comments on the study report or the proposed designation. Okay, I don't think we're going to have any commissioner comments. Oh, Jeff Gagnon, you're.
Sorry about that. I bumped up instead of wave my hand. Just a quick comment about the air rights portion of this. How it, in my term as commissioners, I think it's the first time that this has come up. Can Jennifer, could you just speak to that a little bit? How typical is that? And it just, I flagged it. It's something to ask about.
Yeah, and I'm going to ask Liz Sherva to also provide comment, but I can just say that the motivation for doing that is that the form of this building at this intersection is just so character-defining. And the concern was that if something was ever built right on top and you kind of lose that sense of this five-story curving mass, that 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 might be a reason to want to designate that airspace. Liz, do you want to say anything further?
No, I think you captured it.
And I think that the form of the original building is part of the design of the new portions of the building. So I think that it is important to protect your perception of that design element because it's like becomes the building block of a lot of the new work. So I think it's a great thing to have included that. So thank you.
All right.
Jeff, any one question? Are there any other properties with that sort of specific designation of the airspace or air rights or the building?
Not that we have on record, I don't think. However, we often deal with this in design review, as you all are aware. So while we haven't ever designated the air rights, we, we often deal with, you know, significant setbacks, not allowing additions on top of designated buildings. So it's something that we grapple with a lot as a commission, but I don't think I've ever seen any air rights done in a designation before. Jen, am I wrong?
I'm trying to think, and I think you might be right, that we haven't phrased it as the airspace. But I think that we have standards or criteria that say you cannot build on top of this building. I mean, I can't think of a specific example.
Right, or it would be a setback.
Right.
You know, so many feet setback from the front of facade. But because of this, especially when you're driving into Nubian Square from, you know, in your approaching this site. Commissioner Gagnon like stated that perfectly, that it is a very much a presence in the area. And that is part of why we are recommending designating the airspace so that it remains a presence as you enter into the neighborhood in on this roadway. So I think we've probably seen it maybe as a setback in some other buildings. And maybe not even on top, but on a side. But this is, I think, I, and Jen, you can agree, I think this might be the first time we're actually designating air rights on top of a portion of the building.
Yes, I think it's like a different way of presenting that idea, but it is similar in some way to the concept of a setback. So it's both kind of a new thing for us, but also not entirely a new thing. I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying. Thank you.
I'll say I, I love the clarity that this brings so that it isn't left to interpretation. It's very clear. So I appreciate that very much.
Yes. I agree with that. It's it'll make design review much smoother.
I actually, I think I did this diagram just for the hearing, and I think probably I should go and put it back in the study report for further future reference. I mean, so feel free to make that a proviso tonight.
Yes, that would be very helpful.
Okay, we can put that in.
All right, if there are no further commissioner comments, that would conclude tonight's public testimony. And I'm going to ask Jen once again to review next step. You have that in front of you, Jen. I stepped on you last time and took this part.
That's okay. Yes, okay. As required by the B L C's regulations, written statements may be submitted for the record up until three working days following the hearing to the B L C at twenty City Hall Avenue, Boston, Mass. zero, two, one, oh, eight. Statements may also be sent to blc@boston.gov. And an extension of time for submitting written testimony and a postponement of the designation vote may be granted tonight at the chair's discretion. Lastly, the public record of this hearing is available upon request to the B L C staff. Thank you.
Thank you. So given the written and verbal testimony received about the study report, I believe the commission has information tonight to proceed to a vote. Even though the commission would vote on the designation tonight, staff would continue to accept written testimony for the record until this Friday, November fourteenth at five P M. Commission tonight would take two votes this evening. One is to accept the study report of this proposed Boston landmark, and two would be to designate as a landmark. And I would now move to the first of those votes and entertain a motion to accept the study report. There a motion and a second on that?
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Orlando, thank you. Is there a second?
No, yeah.
Commissioner Hart. All commissioners present would be voting. Commissioner Orlando.
Yes.
Commissioner Baraducci.
Yes.
Commissioner Barrios Milner.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagnon.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward Hyatt.
Yes.
Commissioner Haney.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Study report is accepted. I will move on to the second vote, which is to designate as a landmark. Is there a motion to designate?
I'll make that motion.
Was that Commissioner Ward Hyatt?
Yes.
And a second, please.
I'll second Brad. Justine.
Thank you again, Justine. Commissioner Orlando.
Yes.
Commissioner Baraducci.
Yes.
Commissioner Barrios Milner.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman. I think I heard a yes. Commissioner Hoffman, can I ask you to vote again? Sorry.
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Gagnon.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward Hyatt.
Yes.
Commissioner Haney.
Yes.
I vote yes. Commission having voted to designate the landmark this evening means that the staff will create a vote of designation document that will present the details about the property, a list of commissioners' votes on the designation, and the date of the vote. Document will be sent to the city clerk who advances it through the approximately forty-five-day mayoral and city council approval process. The mayor shall transmit her approval or disapproval to the city council within fifteen days. The city council then has thirty days by which to overturn by a two-thirds vote designation approved by the mayor. Once the designation document is returned to the Boston Landmarks Commission by the city clerk, it is ready for the final step, which is recording with the registry of deeds. Thank you. That concludes this matter.
Brad, just a quick question on that one. Because we're doing a Wednesday night hearing, should the public comment go until Monday?
Monday.
Because that's three working days. Sorry.
I think you're probably right.
I don't know. It didn't occur to me until now.
So we could say that for, for this one. I don't think it matters for the previous one since we didn't vote.
I don't think it matters.
Thank you. All right, advisory design reviews. So tonight, we're going to look at two. They're both on Boston Common. And the first is a Freedom Trail Beacon Mall accessibility ramp. The applicant is Kathy Baker, Clips interim Parks Director. Kathy, are you here? Will you be speaking or someone else speak?
Kevin Bogal from the Parks Department will be speaking. Kevin, I've unmuted you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'll be speaking to introduce the projects. And then my colleague from Western and Sampson, Cassie, will be speaking to the design, if that is okay.
Yep.
Great.
Wonderful. So grateful to everyone for your time and attention tonight. And I want to thank especially the landmark staff for their assistance in the process so far. Tonight, we're going to be speaking about two projects in the Boston Common. And just want to speak a little bit to the responsibility that we feel to have the opportunity to add to the built legacy of this important property. The first project we're speaking to is the Boston Common Freedom Trail Beacon Mall Accessibility Ramp. And if you could go to the next slide, please. Wonderful. And.
It's right. I'm not sure.
Uh, I think I'm seeing it as are other people.
I see it. It's not full screen, though. It's.
It's not full screen and it's quite small.
Yeah.
Okay, let me see if I can help.
Yeah, that should work this. Yeah.
If you press F eleven, it should make the window full screen as well and take away. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Good for me. Okay. So we can go ahead and skip ahead to, let's see, slide number three here. So there are a lot of folks involved in this. Myself, a senior project manager from Boston Parks and Recreation. We're also working with Rebecca Di Tomaso from the Friends of the Public Garden. Christopher Breen, Deputy Director of Neighborhoods, has been a part of this. And then we have the A Team from Western and Sampson Design Studio, who have been a part of the common since the development of the master plan and now are following through with these projects from the master plan. So on the next slide, we can start to look at the location of the accessibility ramp. So this is located in the far northeast corner of the common, near the intersections of Beacon Street and Park Street. And the next slide will show kind of the importance of this area specifically as kind of an epicenter of the State House, the Robert Shaw Memorial, the beginning of the Freedom Trail, and the Shaw Memorial Monument stairs. And the next slide then kind of shows where this ramp is proposed as a part of the master plan study. So currently on Beacon Street, there is no accessible entrance whatsoever from Beacon into the common. And so this serves as the only point of access for folks with mobility issues, folks with strollers. And we're proposing to, proposing to put it directly adjacent to the staircase at the memorial. So the next slide shows some of the existing conditions that once we were through the master plan, started to dive into and realize the critical root zone of this beautiful mature tree pushed the need. pushed the need, pushed the location viable for the ramp a bit to the west. We looked at the electrical cabinets. We worked with the archaeologist and arborist for the cities to kind of get into any obstructions that might be below surface. And the location of the Freedom Trail in relationship to the existing stairs as well, you can see passing through. The next slide shows from the Beacon Mall side of the staircase, the grade change. We're looking at a nine and a half foot drop from street level to the Beacon Mall. And the next slide shows that same view from kind of looking perpendicular to the staircase, also showing this beautiful mature elm that we see as another aspect of the historical nature of this location. And then the following slide shows the site location from a bit more distance with the State House on the far left side. And highlighted with the red outline, you see the kind of overall footprint that we're looking at for the accessibility ramp and some of the existing conditions, the benches and lighting and so on. So the following slide shows the vertical elements. In addition to the tree, we have several benches. We have a Boston Street lighting cabinet directly adjacent to the Beacon Street Mall. And then closer to the Beacon Street sidewalk, we have Parks and Recreation Cabinet that powers our Christmas lights, police emergency light and the evening lights at the monument. And then the next slide shows a 3D render of a prior design iteration. We've gone through a lot of back and forth and worked with Chelsea and Joe and Liz having staff level conversations before coming to the commission. And this was a previous design iteration that that we've actually decided to move forward from after hearing some feedback from them. And so at this point, I'll pass the torch over to Cassie, who will talk about what we were responding to and the directions we moved from here.
Thanks so much, Kevin. And just wanted to echo Kevin's appreciation for our staff level conversations. They've been helpful in ensuring that the design is moving in a direction that's historically aesthetically appropriate and pushing us, challenging us to think differently and in four iterations that I'll be sharing. So we're looking for feedback from the landmarks commission tonight on which alternative we should pursue. We have four under consideration. Three are similar in nature and one that diverges a bit and each has their pros and cons. And I'll try to illuminate, I'll illuminate the differences in each and then we can go through the details in greater detail through your questions. Next slide. So in this first scheme, we have a switchback ramp that includes a mid vegetation vegetative area that would allow for potentially some tree planting. So we start up at Beacon Street with a six-foot wide landing, bring folks down as quickly as possible, really to try to minimize the overall length of this ramp. So at eight point two percent, then we'll land at a mid landing on the west side, switch back around at eight point two percent down to a lower level landing. The interior vegetative, vegetative area ends up being about six feet, almost seven feet actually, so quite significant. It would allow for some good tree growth in here. And the, if you go to the next slide. So the handrails in this and barrier rails in this case would be required for the full length of this this ramp in some combination, either barrier rail for part of, of the ramp on the upper landing on the east side, and then it would continue around on the, from the mid landing down almost two thirds of the way, we would be required to have a handrail the entire way. So there would be some combination of barrier rail and handrail. The wall heights themselves, you, we would end up in this alternative having almost a six-foot, eight-inch wall on the west side along the face of Beacon Mall. And then stepped back, we would have a five-foot, four-inch wall, stepped back a ramps width and then vegetation. So about thirteen feet back, I believe. Next slide. So we're calling this alternative Beacon Mall green. And so in this scheme, we've taken that vegetative strip in the middle between the two ramps and brought that to the Beacon Mall side. And so we get a similar amount of planting in the front and allows for some relief along that pedestrian face of the ramp. In this case, we are also maximizing the slope at eight point two percent here to try to minimize the overall width. It ends up making the ramps about sixty-five and a half feet wa- long, I guess, so to speak, in these first three schemes that you'll see. If you want to skip to the next slide. So we have a similar condition here for handrails and barrier rails as in Scheme A, where we're utilizing a mixture of barrier rail and handrail and trying to minimize that barrier rail to the greatest, greatest extent possible, just for where it's really needed only where we have exceed grade change more than two and a half feet. Right. And then on, I apologize, on the wall heights, the west side, we're able to minimize that to a three-foot wall stepped back behind our vegetative strip. And on the east side, we have a nine-foot wall that would be stepped back by that vegetative strip plus our ramp width. So we're at about thirteen feet there. That would be stepped back, but quite a tall wall there. Next slide. Concept C, we're calling split green to study what it would mean to, to take our six-foot wide vegetative strip and split it into a two smaller strips, one along Beacon Mall and one in between. We really, we feel that it would be challenging in this case to get trees planted in that three-foot strip. But it would allow this option to include benches or some other minor relief of the ramp from the Beacon Mall edge. In this case, again, we're maximizing our slope and trying to minimize the wall lengths, although in this condition, we would have a cheek wall or a wing wall along the east side and the upper, actually, yeah, where your cursor is now on the upper right east side to be able to retain some of those steep slopes. Next slide. In this case, because we're shrinking our vegetative area, we actually have to increase the amount of barrier rail that we're, we'd need because our slopes are dropping more quickly. And so we'll have essentially split our barrier rail a two-thirds length along the top and then, you know, plus or minus a third length on the lower ramp side. And, and as in the last two schemes, we would need handrail for the full length. In this case, we have just shy of a seven-foot wall stepped back for the upper landing on the east side and just shy of a five-foot wall on the west side, stepped back just slightly, just under three feet there. Next slide. And then our final scheme departs from this idea of maximizing our slopes and looking at an option where we could do a slope to walkway instead. So the slope would then be under five percent, not then, we would then not need to have handrails, which would be a great win. But then it allows, it would mean that our ramp, or not ramp, our walkway would actually extend to just under ninety-six feet long. We were fortunate to present these options to Disabilities Commission just recently. And they seemed agreeable to any option. So we're interested in the commission's hearing. I think they were partial to this option being a more gentler slope. And even though it's longer, it's an easier, you know, less steep for someone in a mobility device. In this case, our handrail barrier rail condition is much more limited. We actually, you know, as mentioned, no hand, no handrail. And so our barrier rail would really sit in between the two ramps and then wrap around one corner on the west side. In this case, we would have just over a nine-foot wall stepped back quite a bit. So our, we actually are able to gain eight feet of vegetation in the front along Beacon Mall, plus our ramp at five feet wide gives us about thirteen foot back that our very tall wall would sit. And then our shorter wall on the west side, holding up that mid landing is just shy of four feet. Next slide. Touching on materials, we are pulling from the Joy Street stairs for material and ornamentation of wall inspiration. So that Joy Street uses a Chelmsford granite, really to create some distinction between this, this installation and the Shaw Memorial itself being Milford pink. The detailing of the Joy Street stairs, something we're investigating and potentially pulling from with the cornice detailing, the inset and the baseboard. We're looking to the, for barrier rails, we're looking to the perimeter fencing of the common for inspiration, minus the spiky tops, which we would not include for obvious reasons, but the picket rail plus the circular detailing on the bottom is a nice detail and we, and given the proximity of this to that, could be a nice tie-in. For handrail precedence, we're looking at the public garden and actually at the Joy Street stairs, there's a handrail as well where we have a post, a black steel post that's connected to a bronzed handrail condition that we, we think would be a nice connection and tie-in to the aesthetic in this area. In terms of shade tree plantings, we're proposing three shade trees around and outside of the ramp that are different from the smaller trees that I, we had shown in the concepts. These trees we're considering to be little leaf linden and red oak. We are still exploring what those smaller trees could be for the vegetative strip that I had mentioned, but we need something that is a bit, has a bit smaller root zone, critical root zone and perhaps a tighter leaf form. So TBD on that, but we are investigating that at the moment. And that is all. Looking forward to your comments.
Liz, can you remind me, do we take public comment on, on these design reviews? We do not.
Just an advisory review.
Right.
Well, no, well, I would, I would just say it's, it's at Brad's discretion.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, Joe. Let's start with commissioner comments. There's, there's a lot here. I appreciate the four options. I certainly appreciate the participants, including staff, for all the work they've done to get us to this point. And as just a reminder, this is a, this is an advisory review. This project would come back then to the design review subcommittee. And then back to the commission again for, for a final vote. When the subcommittee thinks it's approvable. I will leave it to individual commenters to where they want to start. We have, we have four options, so we could go through them and to the extent that people want to talk about any one of them, maybe we don't have to go through all of them. We should probably talk about materials just a little bit. But I open the floor to any commissioner wishing to comment.
Brad, yeah, I, you know, I can never find my, raise my hand prompt here since we went over to this new Zoom system. So anyway, I'm raising my hand.
Your real hand works.
Wow, this is, this is a big deal. Was there, cause I walked out there today, because I wanted to see this a little bit more closely and kind of get an idea of just the impact that this would have. And I wish you had had a drawing that shows the full memorial site in terms of the staircases on both sides. Because I'm not sure if those staircases are symmetrical or not. And one of the things that I was looking at, and I know that what you're, you know, the answer, what it's going to be is, is you're going, you've mentioned that tree, but did you look at at all trying to put the ramp on the right, far right-hand side of the stairway there? It's closest to Park Street and coming down that, you know, along the, the pathway that parallels Park Street where you would be, there's enough room there to do a switchback. So you could come down a certain amount. And then when you do your switchback, heading towards, back towards the monument, you're actually going to be at a higher level, but you're going to be meeting a higher level grade as well. So I think you'd be able to have a much shorter run of the ramp.
Is there a site plan we could look at while David is making this comment?
I don't, I'm not. Do you have a larger one?
Earlier on, there was one.
Not in the area that I think.
No, I didn't see anything here.
David would like, well, I mean, I guess we're getting this.
Yeah, that's the script there. And I, I did, I know that we can, people can go on Google Maps and look at it, but there is that, yes, there is that large tree, the elm tree. It's, I don't know if anybody's ever had it. Or the park stewardess has ever had it looked at, or the friends rather have had it looked at to see what the condition of it is. Because if it's not in that great condition and if it's failing, I think since this ramp is going to be pretty permanent, it might be something to look at. But I do think you can have this ramp easily tucked in on that strip of, of planting area between the pathway and Park Street sidewalk. And even if you had to tilt that sidewalk that is in the common that parallels Park Street, if you had to just do some work on that to cant it over a little bit, to give a little bit more room, I think would be worth looking at. It's just, would be completely tucked away in that corner. Cause right now this ramp is going to be so in your face. And this is the, you know, we've got this mall that, that focuses down onto it and, and that's would really, you know, yeah, this, this is what I'm looking at here. So unfortunately, it just shows the tree itself and blocking that whole thing. But if, I don't know if it could be zoomed in a little bit, but I looked at the, the entry would be easy to make on that small section of fence between the corner to come down into the, into the ramp and start the decline down. I know you've got to put a flat air, landing area first and then start to make the decline. And I thought about, well, is there a way, you know, if you, if the, the land area, say where the tree is, is sacrosanct. And I'll even say, was there a way to look at maybe having the ramp, you know, taking away a little bit of that, of the stairway and pushing that over, you know, the thirty inches or whatever, twenty-four to thirty inches. You know, it would be something I think that would get it further away from the tree roots. Cause I think the, this tree right now, let's face it, the tree roots are not going side to side. Those tree roots are all going down wherever the open, open land is. And so certainly no, the trees are not going under Park Street so that, and they're, I doubt they're going under the sidewalk very much. It's, it's more of a lateral, thin lateral growth to the tree roots. But so, you know, I can't say yes, absolutely not. It's not going to, to impact it. But I guess so my point is, did you look at that at all? Or did you not even look at it because of the tree?
I can answer that. David, your, your brain is going in a great direction. This project has been studied and studied for many years. It's beginning back in 2016 where a more comprehensive location study was done. And this area was considered as an option and was ruled out for some number of reasons that and was ruled out for some number of reasons that I, I can't recall at this particular moment. Um, but we can share that study with you, uh, with the commission and with landmark staff um, to give some more context. Uh, then the master plan took that, the outcomes of that study and incorporated it into a recommendation that then led to this project location. Lauren, I think has an answer and she's muted. Can we make Lauren a co-host or participant? Sorry, I interrupted Cassie.
Lauren should be able to unmute herself.
Um, hi, sorry, everybody. Um, I'm pretty sure that that is one of the two, and I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that's one of the two elms that are Boston Common's oldest trees. And, um, cause they flank the memorial and the stairs. So I believe that is part of it because they're not just any trees, um, because they also are believed to have been planted by John Hancock.
We should find out.
Just want to. Completely documented. Okay, I'm, I know that there are two elms that are flanking the memorial that were supposedly planted by John Hancock. I'm ninety-five percent sure those are the ones. We can clarify that with our arborist. I have, I tried to call him and he did not answer right now, but we can get that answer to you, but I believe that's part of the reason.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure there's age to them. There's no question about it. The caliber of that is huge and I, there are basically four elms with around this memorial that I think are, have a lot of age to it. Two of them are right in the memorial itself that are surrounded by the brick. Then there's the one on the left side where your, where you push your ramp away. That's quite large, which was probably a similar age. And then this one on the corner, and then there's one uh, at the low end of the, of the ramp on the backside that is quite large in terms of the, the size of the trunk. Now, the tops of the trees have been cut off long ago and all, all those branches are gone. And a lot of it is side growth, so that's why I didn't know what the condition of the tree actually was.
And I, I can answer that question. David, uh, at the start of this project, we had Hartney Graymont, an arborist firm, do an assessment on all of the trees within the limit of works. Of course, the elm was included in that. Uh, they made, they, their recommendations necessitated us pushing the ramp out because the, the, um, critical root zone of those really go to the drip edge. And so any intrusion within that drip line is going to adversely affect that tree, uh, which we of course don't want to do. Um, and kind of including the excavation required to get walls in. We wanted to push that out even a bit further so that we're not impacting it by our excavation as well.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, yeah, they did feel that it was in good health and did not, yeah, did not feel it was worth removing it.
All right. Well, all right. So with that said, this is going to eventually come to the design review committee. Is that correct, um, Chelsea? So this is an advisory tonight?
Yeah, this is advisory and, yeah.
Okay, um, so it would be great when you come to design review, if you could at least have looked at the possibility of how you might squeeze a ramp in there between that tree, keeping the tree and seeing if that would work, what, and, and how long it would, the runs would have to be to make up the grade. I know I just went and quickly counted the stairs, the, the, the number of stairs on the side that you're trying to, you put the ramp in. Um, there, I think there were, uh, seventeen, I think there were seventeen stairs and the other side had, uh, nineteen, or fifteen. So there's, you know, about eighteen inches def- less grade to have to, um, uh, make up, but with that said, so I, I do have some comments that I wanted to make on these schemes here, um, that you've shown. Now, I think this view right here is something that we've got to try to mitigate. And I think one of the ways of doing it for the, is that at the very least is to make sure that the, the ramp wall, at least on the common side here is pushed away so that there's enough, a, a larger amount of planting space from the walkway to the ramp. So that could be, you can, and I, and I think the vegetation that goes in there should not just be those large-scale trees. They should be trees of a smaller scale, something like, uh, uh, you know, there's these, um, smaller scale maples, like the Ammer maple, the Triton, um, the paper bark maple. Those are smaller. The heads of the trees are lower and that's where the, the, the blocking of the visibility of this ramp is going to take place. You put in those large trees, you've got just the trunk that's going to go way high and the canopies are way up at top. It's not going to do anything to help screen this. So I think the goal is to try to screen this out as much as possible.
David, is this the right slide for you?
Yeah, I think this is, well, this is the one. And then I think the other, uh, the other one that I thought might work is the, is, is number or letter D, which was the, the one that was quite long. Um, and it, and it does, so those are, are walkways. They're not ramps necessarily, you're saying. And the only reason the railings are in place for the drop versus the protection of the person in the chair. Is that correct? Okay, so there's basically one run. So, you know, we're still going to see them, but in this case, at least it allows there's a generous planting space from the walkway to the ramp, and I would absolutely not use these, you know, deciduous trees. These, these do nothing. Um, and I think this is where you'd want to have trees that have like a medium canopy. Uh, um, so that it's sufficiently blocked out, uh, even some trees or, or, you know, even a stewartia. I don't think we should do flowering trees, but things like a stewartia is a nice tree. There are other large-scale shrubs that would do, uh, like, uh, the double-file viburnums, those things really get quite tall, ten to twelve feet high, and they're really uh, striking plants in terms of the fall color, all of that, but they're not, uh, you know, inordinately ornamental. Um, they, they have a nice, uh, appearance. And then there's other viburnums, uh, in the common as well. Uh, or certainly in the public garden, but, um, so I think, um, that would be my, my suggestion. I'm not sure, you, you don't have a real, a view here though of what this looks like from Beacon Street, do you? Of any of these renderings? Like how much of the wall is visible if you're, when you're on beacon, or even like across the street at, standing at the state house? Is how much of a presence of that wall are we going to see?
We didn't do a three-D model for these four, given these were iter, you know, sketches that we're iterating on. Um, but when we move in a direction, the next time will be before you will have modeled out the alternative that we're moving forward with and, you know, as many views as needed to convey all the different perspectives.
Yep, okay, cause it would be good, uh, i- in, in that case, if it is a highly visible wall that you can see when you're on Beacon Street or across the, on the sidewalk of the state house. If there's a lot of wall there, then maybe this would be best, uh, moved to the middle of that planting space. So you have a sufficient amount on both sides to, to plant up, um, with these, uh, with, you know, deciduous kinds of plantings that would, uh, would hide this as much as possible. So I suppose, like I said, if you had to choose one, I think, I guess this one is the one that, that, uh, you know, I would go with, I think it's, but you are extending it thirty more feet than the others. Is that not correct? I think you said nine, this is ninety-six and the others were sixty-something. What is it?
I just want to make sure that Kevin got to speak.
Thank you. I, I have my hand raised, so, um, yeah, it, this is thirty feet in each direction, right? So it's ninety-five instead of sixty, but that's each run. So it adds an additional sixty feet. In total, but speaking with the Disabilities Commission, they said if they had to pick between shorter and steeper, longer and shallower, th- this is the direction they would want to go in. Um, and, uh, so that is the question. And, and I wanted to speak, I appreciate you bringing up the trees, David. It's something that I've, uh, myself gone back and forth with because when you look at having the tree next to the wall, uh, which is in this image at the tallest three and a half feet, it looks like. Uh, and then you put a person's height next to that, all of a sudden you're at nine feet, uh, right at the tree canopy that you're talking about. Um, and so a tree, we're looking at the columnar trees so that that canopy doesn't then grow into the walk space uh, of this path, uh, that would then require, um, maintenance to come and do like a clean cut on the side and really kind of ruin that canopy if it does spread. So, um, I feel like your suggestion of double-file viburnum and other evergreen uh, viburnums like that are excellent because you can manicure those a little bit more to keep them out of the walkway. Um, but that is something that we've been going back and forth between, so I appreciate your suggestions and your awareness.
Yeah, I, how much is, uh, what is the planting width on the, on the planting strip that's closest to the, the common side of, of this? I can't, cause the number's so small, I can't see.
It looks like eight foot, one inch.
Eight, one, huh? Um, yeah, that is not, this is, uh, as wide as I had hoped, but, uh, yeah, cause I, I mean, well, it still would be good to look at some of these other, these other small-scale maples. I don't know what the, 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 the spread of them are, um, but perhaps they could be planted a little closer to the, to the common side. Cause I, it, in other words, and then I think in this case, getting a, a, a looser planting, I don't think this should be a formal you know, staccato kind of a, a, a planting. It, it should just be something much less formal. Um, more casual, I guess, is what I'm saying, because in other words, you do these, these, uh, very tight deciduous trees, the way you're showing here. All that's going to do is draw your attention to them. Your eye's going to go to them because they're so striking in the way they look. And that's what we don't want to do. I think we want to have people's eye just go right beyond it as much as possible, so. So those are, those are the, you know, concerns I have. I think, you know, the fencing, you know, I appreciate you trying to, you know, tie in the, the look of the other fence, uh, you know, that's good. Um, the least ornamental the fence, the better. I think again, you know, we're not looking to make the fence pretty. It's really just utilitarian. Um, but I think the, uh, the amount of ornamentation and taking off the finials, I think is a, is a good way to, to go about that. Using granite, I think is a good way to go about it. And then even on this particular view here, the elevation you're showing, I mean, I think it would be although we don't, because we don't have the middle planting strip, I was going to suggest even things like, um, you know, very hardy kinds of climbers, you know, and I'm, I'm thinking something like the, the, oh, the, um, climbing hydrangea, something like, that doesn't require a trellis, that could just like adhere to this, to the granite and have this become green and have it disappear as much as possible, especially on some of these big, uh, six-feet foot or more exposures of, of wall, I think would be uh, a good way to kind of handle that. So I think, uh, yeah, I think that's right now, as much as I could contribute. I, I don't even know, you know, to get planting on, in, in this case, you could even do something like instead of having these two be exactly parallel, the two runs, you know, you could make it more V-shaped too. You know, you're not going to really notice that from the air, but that gives you some room to put planting between them at the highest portion of the exposed wall. You know, so something, you know, being a little bit creative like that and, and see if you could work with, uh, getting some, some planting zones in here to, to help hide that, I think is, is a way to look at it too, so.
All right, I'm going to jump in and ask other commissioners, Commissioner Hart. Patient, uh, I'd love to hear your comments, Chris.
Uh, having a bit of data, Boo, because I think it was almost twenty years ago, I was asked to sit in on a B H C, uh, landscape class. Took on this challenge. They wrote their duties, comment about the Park Street site was actually the winning design, um, for that summer. But that means then, understanding the trees historical, uh, stature, although I, I would note that every day has a cherry tree that George Washington knocked down. So do we really know, is John Hancock planted the trees? That, that means that in the law, you know, the code allows you to go up to eight point three, three percent. What folks don't read is the sentence before it. It says you will use the minimal slope possible. And that is one thing that I think folks often fail to read and often fail to see. For a lot of folks, after you have huffed and puffed up, up to those stairs. The idea of facing another eight percent loss is a lot to ask. And as we think about stories and, and warriors trying to get this down to five percent or less would be ideal. It's just, it's statured. I cannot emphasize enough how many folks even my mom, uh, as she ages, how eight percent versus five percent feels to her. What? Now, if we can do a longer, a longer slope walkway, that's what we should do. I wouldn't know that all of the renderings are based in, in summer. Um, as I look outside my window now, I have no leaves on my trees. And I think we need to give some thought to what this looks like for five or six months of the year. And I, I realize that that is so much, uh, some, uh, what, what's one, uh, for, for landscape artists, it's very difficult to picture in layout of the use. And, but we really need to think about this as to what this looks like from October to April. And I, I can wonder if there's an opportunity here to use some of that wall as some public royal to buy things uh, independent living movement. Or some sort of recognition of how much the state has done for this very rights. Yes, it is. I'll, I'll give it a, I am looking to you in the design review.
Chris, a quick, quick question for me, and I don't want to get too much into the materials, but I, I think I understand the application is to have the, the, I'm going to call it the walking surface, um, as concrete. Which sometimes to me feels a little insubstantial. Is it, is it possible to do the ramp surface or, or the sloped, uh, incline service in granite?
Uh, it, it, the challenge has been to get your, your coefficient of grip. And to get the, the granite laser X enough so it, it doesn't become a
Right.
Look, we survive.
Thermal finish maybe or something.
But, but, and, and obviously, it's something that needs to survive. Having stopped what down on, um, ice melt.
Right.
So you, you don't necessarily want to apply something that's not going to last. So you, you don't necessarily wanna apply something that's not gonna last twenty years, though.
Commissioner Gagnon?
I, I love that. I, I watch. It's wonderful. Does well.
All right, um, Commissioner Gagnon, thank you for your patience.
No problem. Um, back to something more mundane, notwithstanding David's interesting comment about having a version um, that creates a non-rectangular gap in between the two runs. I'm, I was concerned about the previous iterations that showed a very narrow gap and a somewhat narrow gap in between the two because one can only assume what is going to collect in that gap. Um, and unless there's, you know, multiple times a day of people managing that, it's, it's gonna be a problem. Um, not only in terms of trash and whatever else, but um, during the winter and snow and ice season, there's just, I feel like there's a lot that can go wrong in between. Um, in, in the case where there would be a narrow gap in between the two runs. So even though the, the final iteration extends the length of everything quite a bit, but the fact that it, it gets rid of that gap, I think is a, a strong point um, in its, its design. And also that means you can get away with one, you know, system of rails in between the two instead of a double, which is a kind of a double walled effect. You'd have essentially two parallel railings. So, you know, of these iterations, even though the, the fourth one is, is longer, um, I think that minimizing, getting rid of that gap and giving more um, space available for planted screens of various kinds closer to um, the Beacon Mall is better. And I think climbing hydrangeas and other things can solve a lot of problems, so I'm a big fan.
If we do come back and look at Concept D in more detail, I would reiterate Commissioner Baradut's earlier comment too, to see it in context. I have no idea how close this is getting to the Joy Street steps.
Lauren, did you have an answer for a previous question?
No, I, I actually had a question if I can. Um, because as we go from obviously this advisory back to work on some of these things you guys are talking about, I was hoping to clarify a couple of things specifically about some of the suggested vegetation. Um, so I know Chelsea, when you and Joe and, um, and the Parks Department were having our design review, you know, or, or sorry, our, our staff level conversations, um, about the tadpole playground specifically, which I know we haven't talked about yet tonight. You had mentioned the concern about some of the understory planting that was proposed for that park or for that playground because there is no precedent for that in the public or in the common, there is in the public garden. So as we go back, I just wanna make sure that we don't go so far in a direction that we've been warned at, at the staff level. Um, could someone maybe comment on that vegetation, um, thought process so that we kind of know what direction when we go back?
Yeah, and I think, um, no matter what happens right now, we're gonna help you sort of synthesize everything that you've heard tonight at a staff level again, so. Um, you know, we can have further conversations with commissioners and we can get back to you. Um, commissioners, what Lauren's referring to is that we, you know, the study report for Boston Common is very, is clear that we're supposed to be preserving a pastoral landscape and not introducing a lot of like new, um, vegetation that would never have been there before. Uh, in this, that's all I'll say for now. And Lauren, yes, you're right to bring that up and, and we'll help um, bridge that gap as we go.
I just, I'll just say that my, what I was saying was not necessarily to have a planting bed where you've got shrubbery and mulch and all that. This could, these would be small scale trees where their canopies are lower and does, does the, the screening effect you want, and then you do your, the lawn underneath it. There's still room for that. Um, so that, yeah, it's not intended to become this, this little, you know, highly ornamental, uh, planter area, so, yeah.
Thank you, David. I just wanted to clarify before we got back to work.
Selena?
Thank you. Um, I really appreciate all the thought into all these alternatives. Um, I think if, um, if the goal is primarily accessibility, I think I echo Commissioner Hart's comments and what the Disability Commission said for the city in terms of, um, which I think would be Proposal D, you know, which has the lowest grade, um, or rise. Um, so I, I, I just think it's like, it's, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be a perfect solution, no matter what. So like, if that's the point, let's do that the best that we can. Um, and I, I agree with some of the other comments that it allows for like the, the plantings in front. And also just wanted to echo Commissioner Hart's comment, like when I saw the wall, the first thing in my mind, I'm like, how can we use that wall? I know there's, that corner is very monument heavy already, but it just screams to me like historical timeline. I don't know, you just have this space, um. Is there a way to, to play into it and, and give people, um, that are doing self-guided walks, you know, another picture as to like all the history that's happened across the street at the State House, you know, in the common itself. Like, I just think it's like a really, it could be a really interesting opportunity to just, um, add to the, the explanation of how important that little corner is.
Other commissioners?
Jeffrey?
Hi.
Hi. Um, is, is it possible we can do just one single long ramp? From like the Joyce Street stair up to the memorial that doesn't involve a retaining wall? If we can, that would be under, I think, five percent. Has that been looked at?
I know we mentioned it during staff comments, um, or rather in the staff review. Cassie, what was your answer?
Oh, my gosh, we've studied this eight, um, however many which ways, uh, but yes, we did look at that option. Um, we are, it's a two to one slope and in this, um, this section of the common. So anything we do will require a wall, no matter if it's a sloped walkway or a ramp.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm calculating about two hundred and fifty linear feet.
It would be quite significant.
Up to, up to the monument. And
Yeah, so our ramp, our ramp, I believe it's somewhere in the range of, it would be a hun, or sloped walkway would be something in that two hundred foot range. And it would start to get into the, um, trees down towards Joy Street. We start to touch those and impact them, those established trees. Um, so everything is a pro and a con, um, and we, yeah, we felt that was, we were chasing grades at that point and it wasn't helping us, um, get, get into a spot where we're landing people in an appropriate location to service this corner of the common.
I, I would also say that from an accessibility standpoint, that two hundred and fifty feet means if you are going from the State House, you walk two hundred and fifty feet to get to the top of the ramp and then an additional two hundred and fifty to get to the Beacon Street Mall. So total feet you're asking people to move is five hundred. And from an accessibility standpoint, we are looking at the, the lowest number of effort or energy to, to move from one place to the other. Uh, so we're looking here at a hundred and eighty with the ninety-five foot, ninety foot in each direction, so. Um, it's just a tremendous amount of distance that, that adds to the accessibility aspect of this. Uh, so I just wanted to kind of bring up that point as well.
And Kevin, if I'm correct, the Disability Commission was in agreement with you on that when we met with them as well, that they switched back better for that reason in terms of point to point and not duplicating distances, I believe.
I think it's important though to hear all ideas that are coming out tonight cuz this is an advisory review. So if there's something outside the box, you know, out of the box that a commissioner might say now, that, you know, it might inspire something some further down the line, so, um. Don't, commissioners, don't be afraid to speak.
Yeah.
No, for sure. I think the other thing, Chelsea, is that because like Cassie said, that we have done study after study after study, I think that we can also share some of those as well. So that some of these questions, um, that are being asked, people understand that, like, we have looked at some of those too. So I completely agree, and hopefully we can show you guys some of that history too.
Yep, the great point. Other commissioners? Brad?
I'm just gonna summarize and say I think I'm hearing, uh, support for Alternative D, and I'm hearing support for uh, some consideration of a Park Street ramp, potentially even at the expense of a tree. And I think that's a good, good direction from this group.
Could I make one last comment too, since Chelsea said to think totally outside the box? Um, was there any thought to giving, since, since this is a massive amount of construction and granite and masonry and paving and rails? Was, I almost think that a, a, a small headhouse, did everybody ever think about that coming in off of the Beacon Street sidewalk? Wheeling into a, a, a headhouse that would be, you know, enclosed or all glass, similar to the one that's over in the, uh, uh, at the, um, the common right now? And then having that come down to the level of the, of the sidewalk on Beacon Street. So really then all you're, we're gonna be looking at is, is the size of whatever the parameters of a headhouse would be by ten feet high or something? I don't know. To me, that would seem a lot more innocuous than, than all of that.
I was curious about that as well.
Funny you say that because that, that has been a long time for years. Um, it's something that I had taught to Tom Neil about years ago. Because literally a ten by ten block sits fourteen or sixteen feet high or whatever, it ends up being
Yeah.
Could be visually the least intrusive. The challenge, I think, is is whether the city has the staff to maintain and to, to check the unit at all hours. That's where the beauty of, of walkway begins to get stuck because at two A M. You don't know what's gonna happen with that elevator. And, and we had that problem today in Seaport. Where we've got these long, long stairs coming down from Summer Street to do Congress. And if it's not business hours, you're out of luck. You cannot just, which technically is illegal, but is no one wants it at the city level.
Okay, now we have more commissioners with hands up. That's exciting.
Commissioner Orlando, you're probably next. Thank you.
Oh, I was just gonna say those, those exterior lifts, um, they also max out at a ten-year lifespan, so I'm not sure that that's reasonable to ask, um.
I think
For something that would happen.
Do you mean like an exposed one? I think we're talking about an enclosed one.
Yeah, even the enclosed ones, they max out at a, the, there's, there's still meant for an exterior application, but those, even like the, the better ones, like, they'll say maybe ten to twelve years.
We're talking about elder.
Yeah, we're talking about
Right. Yeah, no, they're all, it's the same. Yeah, no, I know, we're even, even under the elevator code, it would still, they still have really short lifespans overall to, but to, to Commissioner Hart's comment, you know, they, if they can't be maintained constantly with, when they don't have a ton of reliability.
Yeah.
Commissioner Barris Milner, did you have an additional comment?
Just a question about, um, the, the, in the, in this, um, D alternative, um, why are handrails not needed? Cuz it's, it's a, it's not a high enough slope. Like, what, what is the threshold for that?
Handrails are not required on slopes less than five percent. That said, they are very useful to a lot of folks with knee, I mean, hip issues or who, who has strokes. So I, my general feeling is that I would do handrails even along the five percent.
Yeah, that, that was my thought as well. And as, as much as I like the plan, like the simplicity of not having two competing designs, I worry, I mean, I traverse the city a lot with my elderly relatives and I, I know they rely on, you know, they may not have a wheelchair right now, but they, they do, um, they can't come to the front of my house because I have three steps, but there's no handrails there, you know, um. So, yeah, I, I just think, um, that, that's just another consideration I wanted to add in for design review purposes.
There's, there's another thing that I don't know if I've even ever said in a, in a, um, staff review, maybe I have, but the Commonwealth, no, I'm sorry, the Beacon Mall in the plan of the Boston Common is a historic pathway. Uh, but I wonder if, um, you know, a gentle curve into that pathway at this point would give some more generosity to this design. And I don't know if that's something that we should, uh, be considering here. And I, and I, again, Weston Sampson probably has eighteen designs that have already shown what that would do or things like that. So, but just another possibility as we're thinking outside the box right now. Sorry, Joe, go ahead.
I just wanna say, um, you know, great comments. We've spent an hour on this, so I think we, we need to move to the next advisory review, just in the interest of time. So, I mean, hopefully this was helpful and, um, it sounds like we have a good direction with Concept D and exploring some more options with, um, doing something east of the Shawan Royal.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks for that parting. I think I agree you'll get, um, follow up with staff and we look forward to seeing you at the Design Review Subcommittee. Um, so let's move on to, uh, the playground. And is it the same team presenting and the same?
Same.
Give me a moment.
Yeah. Well, perhaps less controversial or less. I believe, I believe so. Uh, at, at least at staff level conversations, which again, very grateful to, uh, all of the time uh, that the commissioners have given tonight and the staff have given over the last weeks and months. Um, a lot of gratitude for you guys. Um, and the, the tadpole playground, um, it's very interesting, uh, to be looking at the, the, uh, playground as a part of, uh, yes, here we go. Um, so we can go ahead and just in the interest of time, we'll breeze on through to slide three, the project location. It's uh, southwest of the ramp, so you can imagine a lot of strollers going down that ramp and then coming uh, directly to the playground. Uh, it's, uh, just across the way from the, um, Frog Pond, uh, given the name. And in the next slide, kind of see a zoomed in aerial view, um, of the plot that it's on and currently taking up approximately thirty percent is the footprint of the playground. Um, this, uh, in recent memory was the biggest, uh, most visited playground in the city. Um, that mantle has gone to Martin Park, but the amount of people from the neighborhood in the the amount of people from the neighborhood and the visitors to Boston that visit this playground is truly astounding. So we'll go ahead to the next slide here. The same project team working on this. And the next slide shows the schedule from the last year. We've been kind of, this is the year of moving from the master plan, developing the design and then circling back to important stakeholders in this project. So starting in January, we had our first meeting with the Massachusetts Tribe, second meeting in August of this year with them. They're a key stakeholder in helping drive some very important and exciting components of the design. We've also been working with Joseph Bagley and archaeologists to do fieldwork in the footprint outside of the current playground as we're looking to expand that. And so we'll talk a little bit about our findings. And then here we are in October, going to landmarks and moving through the design process, going back into community engagement this year as well. So wanting to come and get advisory feedback from the commissioners before going back to the community to make sure we're on the right track as we go back to talk about our current design. So we're really trying to tie into the Boston Common Master Plan goals and objectives around sustainability for the full diversity of users, strengthening the natural, historic, cultural and visual landscape character of the park, expanded amenities with improved safety, maintenance and management, and improving the natural and physical infrastructure for quality and resilience. And the next slide talks about our goals, how we're trying to meet that within the playground itself through accessible entrances and accessibility throughout the playground. So that means a variety of ground level play and ramps to get to different elevations, adding amenities, protecting the existing trees and introducing new play equipment to expand play opportunities. The next slide, I believe I'll pass it over to my associate Cassie to talk about it at this point.
So we engaged with, through our community process, we've developed our conceptual design and found that we really wanted to ground the design with students, kids who are actually using this space. And so we formed a group, we called the Lily Pat Idea Lab from Josiah Quincy School that helped shape the design. They helped develop three distinct ideas. Ultimately, we heard from them that we wanted to smush all of the great things from those three ideas into a preferred plan. And you're seeing a refined version of that tonight. So we have documented history on this panel and of course of the common since its establishment in 1634. And we know that this place has been inhabited much longer and much before the establishment of the pastoral landscape. We, specific to this lawn panel, it became a playground, a wooden playground in the 1970s. The designation of the common was in 1977 and a historic landmark in 87. The playground was upgraded in the 90s and then renovated in 2002. So it's actually quite old, much past its useful life at this point, being, you know, actually 20-plus years old. Our work and conceptual design, really, we wanted to make sure it was in alignment with any thing that might be in the ground, that it would be significant from a Massachusetts tribe native people's perspective. And so we sort of took a pause and did a deep dive archaeological investigation. As Kevin mentioned, we did a grid of 15 shovel test pits and two excavation units that were quite large and our sub-consul and did ground penetrating radar survey as well. Under the guidance of Joe Bagley, there were quite a significant number of artifacts recovered. There were five native lithic artifacts as well. Those were found within the filiter layers of the top four feet. And if anybody knows the history of this space, Olmsted had removed of the top three to four feet. And so that was all non-native material and that's where all the artifacts were found. So they came from elsewhere, thus deemed removed from their original context and not archaeologically significant, although the, the artifacts themselves have been logged and catalogued in a part of the record now. Next slide. Interestingly, it may not seem this way, but there is some interesting topography starting in the northeast corner and traversing about 14 feet down to the southwest corner. Part of the master plan goals was to create accessibility from Brimmer Path down to the south end Frog Pond where there, it does not exist today on Long Path or Lyman Path. And so this panel was an opportunity to do, make that accessible connection. We're really into accessibility tonight. So the, this is the 2023 version of the master plan, really essentially a fit study showing what, you know, how much could we expand? What are the limits? Of course, all of the trees on this panel will be protected. We've done, again, a tree assessment on all of the critical root zones. The tree that's in the center of the playground will be protected. So there will be no, the design has been pushing and pulling to try to really fine tune what that, those limits are. In this study also looked at what a potential alignment could be for the the, in an interior accessible ramp and then what other amenities could flank around it. Next slide. So now we're at the current proposed site plan and we'll walk through each piece. But kind of at a high level, we're retaining the existing entrance on the west side that connects to Frog Pond, but introducing two new entrances, secondary entrances on both the north and the south. And the pathways that run inside the kind of lighter gray color will be those accessible connections that I just mentioned. Within the playground itself, we have designated zones for play. The southern area is really focused on two to five-year-olds play. The upper northern half is focused on older ages, five to 12 years old. The in-center core is about gathering, stroller parking, parents and caregiver space seating around that critical, you know, culturally significant tree. And then we have a smaller story circle zone in the lower southeast corner, some independent play. Overall, the theme is really focused on exploring that history that predates the establishment of the common. Through our community process and what we heard, the key elements are like that river's edge, the Charles used to inhabit along the western edge of the common. And then going up the strata from wetlands to shrubland to forest. And so you'll see it as the, as we go through the slides, kind of how that's expressed. The five, the five to 12 structures, this treehouse structure, the kids wanted to stack play. One of our concepts was to maximize play. And so this idea of a treehouse came to be where we can get as much playhouse, play value as possible in a large structure while also making it feel like a structure that may have been built by hand or built with wood and posts by found materials. So this would be a Robinia wood structure with some steel elements. I won't go through all the play elements, but we're trying to get as much in, in there and as many places accessible as possible. And then just another view. And you, there is some color in the playground now with green and golds and tans, blues. We really wouldn't be proposing anything different from a color palette perspective. In our two to five zone, this is what we're thinking of as what animals, plants, fish may have been present back when this was an area where hunter-gatherers came to collect their food for the day. So we've pulled an egress struck, play structure that might have been collecting a fish. There's actually a little fish coming out of the beak. An open fish structure here, a stump playhouse and some other play elements that create this natural edge. And this may be a zone where we use more blues to hearken back. And I think the idea is that we're not, we may not hit people over the head with what the history is. There may be some strategic moments about kind of the history of the space and what it used to be. But just by being in the space, you'll, you may kind of learn through osmosis of the history of this spot. Next slide. In our center area of the playground, we're bringing in swings for the first time ever in our independent play and seesaws. So we're getting some new types of play value, getting gross motor development. And then we're looking at options for the circular bench and benches is a whole nother topic on the common. So we'll put a pit in that for now, but we're are looking at what bench options we have. We heard from the kids that this playground is so packed, it's so well-used, but really some kids need that time to take a break and kind of recharge. And so a story circle came to mind where you could gather a class and read a book, but you could also just pull off and take a break. And so we are thinking about that in this corner of the common in the southeast corner. And the, the Massachusetts Tribe, there is also a, there was great endorsement by the representatives that we were speaking to about this, Elizabeth Salmon and her colleague, because there is a history of that tradition within the Massachusetts Tribe as well. And so we've been talking about an inscription and other ways to bring that educational element in. Next slide. We've also been considering a new element that I don't think is on any, in any playground in, in Boston, but we're calling it a ball run. And it could act, it could function in many ways, but it's really touching back to that idea of a fish weir that was used along the river's edge. There is a fish weir annual installation, a temporary installation on the common. So this would be an expression of that, but in a permanent way. It would be, we're proposing two locations, one for the older kids and one for the younger in those yellow dotted lines. We're looking at what that design could be, but potentially you place a ball at the top and then it goes down into a basket and you're using gravity to collect your ball. So it's not necessarily a piece of play equipment, but it has play value and has a connection to the history of the space. From an entry perspective, we're thinking and had some great staff level conversations about keeping the edges and the perimeter fencing around this playground simple and in keeping with the aesthetic of the common, bringing that picket in and then potentially granite pillars that are in the common and were noted in the master plan as well. From an overhead perspective, we're thinking about more of an artistic expression of reeds potentially or something that can welcome people in, but they would be separated from the actual perimeter fencing and stepped back almost in like a tunnel condition, walking back and introducing kids and visitors to the playground. This top left image is that recommendation from the master plan. We had inventoried all the different types of elements within the common. So there's a range. Obviously, we wouldn't be doing a large pillar, but something connecting to that small pier, maybe even four foot high. And what potential signage could be, what those cattails might look like. So early stages of thinking about this, but the perimeter, we're thinking is, is a simple installation with some simple signage. From a secondary entrance perspective, I think we would do something in keeping with entries. There's actually not, not a, a lot of great examples of precedent for the, for secondary entrances. This is at the burying ground, the single gate, and there's a double gate condition as well. We would obviously not do the sharp top to it, but we were thinking just a simple picket opening gate with two posts on either side for these entries. Planting, again, we would connect planting to the plants that may have been in those particular zones up the, the levels that you go up the playground. So wetlands plants that are incredibly bulletproof and maintainable. We're also thinking of the fish weir as a potential plant edge to help retain, because we know kids will run all over these plant areas. So any way that we can protect the plants would be, is going to be a part of the consideration. Next slide. In our center zone, we're thinking about what our shrubland could be. And I'll be interested to hear the conversation around plants, because this is really the first introduction of any planting on the common or would be. Next slide. And then forest potential for species and of course seasonality, flowering, texture are all considerations for these plant selections. And I believe that rounds up our presentation. Thank you.
Commissioners? Anybody still have any steam? Commissioner Hart?
Now, I know this playground so well because my two monkeys love going to playground and to Frog Park. And we love the Richard Byron Park in at Children's Museum. We, we love the Menino Park at Jordan. As a parent, I will tell you, it is a nightmare when you have multiple entrances for which your kids can escape both. And that is, that is the issue I saw for the City Hall playground. If you are dealing with younger kids who are runners, and one goes one way and one goes the other way. The last thing about the Frog Park playground is it's one way in and one way out. So I, I appreciate the idea from a mental standpoint. Imagine a couple young monkeys, they go their own way. I would prefer fewer entrances. That's their basic design principle. The second thing is I would just notice Brimmer Path is in such poor condition overall. I would not think of it as accessible. And we did, we spent loads of money on decorative fencing, but we can't seem to make things our pathways in the common. So I'll, I'll kind of leave that. Let me guys would say, the idea of the ball run would be the most popular thing in that playground. Because if you go to Children's Museum, the ball run at the Children's Museum is constantly embarrassing. But it's always about, it requires a lot of staff cleaning up and directing and balls go missing. I don't know that Boston Parks is equipped to handle that. It's a challenge for you guys to maintain your water features at playgrounds to that self. uh at playgrounds to let itself and with that, I'm glad you helped.
Thanks, Chris. Um I think Commissioner Orlando was next.
Thanks, Brad. Um just a couple of things. Um on the overall uh master plan, they talked about some deck areas. Is that in this current plan?
So we've evolved the deck areas to be more of that center core gathering zone.
Okay.
Yeah.
So not on like those outer perimeters? I like that. Um the signage, I know you mentioned, I think, a couple of times um that the intent is to keep the signage pretty minimal, um simplistic.
Mm-hmm.
Um I think that's something that we'd want to somehow memorialize that um this, when you come back for design review, if we can have um clarity around um all the intended signage, and then it would be good if we can document that that's where it ends um going forward. I know uh in conversations, I think with staff, it's already been addressed about kind of the size of the expansion um and a lot of the language in the study report. Something that I keep coming back to are the, the cotton tails and I'm not I'm not sure I'm convinced that that falls within the tolerance um of kind of easing back on the language of the study report um for that expansion with the, with the height and I guess more like unrealistic features there. The height in the gymnasium equipment. I think that kind of feeds into uh the overall intent a little bit more, but I think the height of those um structures, I think they're made out of metal. I, I don't see how those can fit within the, the language of the study report.
Just to clarify that, Justin, you mean the taller um like tunnel?
I'm sorry, I keep writing down cotton tail, and that's not what we're talking about. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
I had it wrong.
You're talking about the entrance. Thank you, yes. I wrote it down wrong yesterday, today, and I just said it wrong.
Just wanted to be clear.
Cattails, yep.
Okay.
Awesome. Sorry about that. But otherwise, looking forward to seeing more, more detail and design review.
Commissioner Haney.
Yeah, I think Justin sort of pinpointed that, the uh the the cattails. Um I mean, we're wondering if is, is there a possibility of a marshy area where you can grow real cattails and have kids explore that area rather than a facsimile out of steel?
I will add, the uh Massachusetts Tribe asked if there's a place where we could put tadpoles as well, so that could go in with the marshy area.
And then staff is gonna tell you that that is. No, I'm just kidding. I, obviously, you know, I mean, for the commissioners, we've pulled excerpts of the study reports for them, right? That says pastoral landscape. And I think for this project, we're saying there are lots of exceptions here because it's play equipment, it's which, you know, has a pretty limited life cycle of its own that like the commission really needs to seriously examine the expansion of this playground and then the border materials and maybe be a little bit less worried about what's inside the play, the playground structure. So I just wanted to say that like when we're starting to introduce like water features and and real cattails and tadpoles, we're, we're going way far away from the study report language. Your prerogative commissioners, but I, I just want to bring us back a little bit to um the study report.
Can I, can I comment on the cattails and the real marsh? Um just from a kid's safety perspective, um we don't have the ability to manage that within a playground and marshes and watery things that are standing water um breed mosquitoes. Um and I don't think that's something that from the Parks Department's perspective, we would want to introduce into a children's play area. So that would be my concern with tadpoles and real cattails in the play area.
I want to pick up on something um Chelsea said. And I certainly appreciate all the thought and care and excitement that's going into the actual play equipment and the narrative around it. Um but I think uh in large part for us, it has to do with the size of this and in kind of the border conditions of it, right? How, how it feels and looks in the park. And I don't, I don't necessarily want to get in the weeds, if I can say that uh on that tonight, but when you do come back, I would love to understand the sort of border conditions better and especially regarding what looks like a fairly extensive planting program of the kind of plants that maybe aren't already in the park. Um and sort of how that perimeter edge is, is conceived of and what it looks like and what's on one side of the fence and what's on the other side of the fence. Stuff that I think is going to be really interesting and important. Commissioner Berdutchi.
Um yes, thanks. Um okay, I just want to make sure I'm on, yeah. Um I, I think you're, you're right about that. I think I'd like to see when you, you know, come before the design review that uh just a comparison in size, what a superposed, superposed over the, over the others, as far as, just so I know how much you are expanding this. Um and then one of the things that is not shown here, that is going to be something that, that you know, the design review committee will look at as well, is how does it fit into the, the overall space of the Common? And, and that means like what are some of the views that you're going to see outside the area? Um and I'm particularly curious about some of these. Um, you know, we have a lot of vertical structures and that's great. And I like the fact that they're toned down. They're not these, you know, primary colors and that kind of thing that you usually see in playgrounds. Is that to the, the um uh the, the northern part there for the older kids, is that, are they actually going to be wood or is it some other plastic?
There, it will be Robinia wood, which is black locust. It's like a very hard, dense wood.
Yeah, and then the color is more just in the pavements for the most part. And, and I guess that was my next question is all of these color, like the greens and the blue and then this sort of peach color, um though, that's all rubberized surface?
It would be, but the, the design of that rubber is not not conceived of yet. These are just placeholders. So colors and colors, and there may be some design refinement to those spaces.
So the, as far as the, the playground that's there now, is, is the majority of that surface, the rubberized surface, there is?
Yeah, it, it all is rubber, apart from the splash area.
Well, you have no areas of, because I, I thought the trend of playgrounds was getting into, to introducing more uh sort of uh natural elements, like in other words, an area where there's exaggerated sort of mounding that has, you know, turf on it that the kids could roll down and, and that sort of thing and, and crawl, things to crawl through. Yeah, and I don't see this. So there's really none of that here. There's no turf, no natural sort of grass or land?
There would be grass around the edges where the trees are um outside of the, the limits of the fencing.
Yeah.
But inside would be either plant bed or the rubber surface or con, or concrete anyways.
All right. And I'm not going to get into the programming of it, but if, you know, you've obviously worked a lot to figure out what you want to see there, but I I would hope that you would, you would know what the successful features of, are, are of the original or the existing playground are, and then, you know, maybe trying to reuse that, those successes. Um I think would be, would be a good way to incorporate things here. I, I know, I know you have, showed a lot of plants in your, your palette. I don't know where they're going to go here, and I think that's what I want to see for the, for the design review is, is how you're planning to do that and why. Is it, what's the point of the plants? Is it to make it pretty for who? The kids or for the out, people looking at it from the outside? Um because I don't think the kids are going to really care, you know, for the most part, and I think it, it's just going to be a huge maintenance thing. So you know, I don't, not against plants, but I want to see, you know, have them serve some kind of purpose or function. Um, you know, I don't know if you want to get, you get into edibles and blueberries and that sort of thing, probably not, but uh um anyway, so I, I just want to make sure, and just based on the comment that was made uh for the, for the uh uh accessibility ramp there, uh you know, is this the place to put all of this fine textured plant materials now, since that doesn't exist anywhere on the Common? Or, yeah, and uh so, so just something to keep in mind. Um the, you know, the entrance, it would be nice to have some kind of entrance threshold. Kids love that idea, I think, of walking under something that's kind of cool. I, I didn't hate the, the cattails. I thought they were kind of fun as far as they, if they can feel more sculptural than literal, I think is probably kind of the way to go. And I'm assuming you're getting rid of that old archway. You're not using that anymore, right? Yeah. So I mean, it's just some, you have an opportunity to be creative with something to walk under. So it's like this, this kind of a threshold thing uh that the kids get excited about when they walk through, or it's something that they see from a distance. That's also going to be something I think that's important for this playground too, that, that, you know, as they're approaching it, they could see, oh yeah, we want to go over there. That's where, you know, where the cattails are, but whatever you have. Um so that element of excitement is something I think to, to build into this uh as well, so. Um is there going to be, is this stor, is there going to be like a storytelling thing? Is that what this thing at the bottom is here, the bottom right corner? You said it's going to be more quiet area, but I assume you can use it for like a stor, storytelling. I don't know how far away those from the center, from the stage to where the sitting area is, but you might want to think about making that maybe a little bit more intimate if it's going to be for storytelling. So that's it. Uh you know, uh I think um I don't have any, much more to say. Oh, isn't the existing playground, that, that has a water feature in it now? Doesn't it have a spray pool?
It does.
And you're not doing that here?
We're not. Um in part because in the master plan, part of the Frog Pond is proposed to become surface level for accessibility and it'll become a spray pad. And so that would, you know, that being satisfied there allowed us to regain that play space within this playground.
All right. Okay, now, so that's the extent of uh of my comments.
Thanks, David. Um Commissioner Baris, now I see your hand up.
Um I just wanted to say I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of um meeting um with the Massachusetts Tribe and incorporating um you know, elements that are important to them. And I love how the story circle sort of organically emerged, just both from from their perspective and the kids. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. And then I know we're not supposed to comment on playground equipment. I love the the steel and wood combination, but I don't know if the slides are going to be metal in the end and just have some, some uh flashbacks of, you know, those hundred degree days and metal. Um so yeah, I don't know if, if the technology has evolved from the seventies, but just wanted to um put that out there, that that could be tough on these increasingly hot days.
Commissioner Hart.
Uh the one thing that I wanted to I felt mentioning is what I don't see is a lot of seeing for adults. And right now is challenging when the playground is busy to find seeing for adults. And this plan does not seem to provide much in the way of adult seeing. Everywhere it does, like around the tree, that you end up with a huge blind spot so that you cannot watch uh what's your whole playground per se as your monkeys run in different directions. So I, you know, I think David's comment about its overall size is really critical because this just feels way, way larger. I would recontemplate just redoing the equipment as in the playground today and leaving it and it's it's so well-loved and heavily used.
Yeah. I, I thank you, Commissioner, for bringing up the seating. We have been placing and locating benches uh and tables uh and stroller parking as well. So we've been playing around with uh the location of those, uh including accessible seating and companion seating uh throughout. Um and so that is something we're considering, and as we've been tweaking the layout of the play equipment and safety surface, uh that's kind of one of the things that we've been considering. So thank you for bringing that up. Um and I think that to speak to the expansion of the playground, uh you know, we're looking at adding um a tremendous amount of housing to the city uh in the coming years, um growing the population of the city um by a tremendous amount of people, uh as well as accommodating visitors and, and more and more people that come to visit the Common. So um it, it does feel to us as the Parks Department necessary to consider expansion um just to accommodate the growing needs of, of population growth.
And if I could jump in on that too, I don't know if it's possible to pull the plan back up that shows the playground specifically um and the play equipment, but one of the things I also wanted to share in terms of that expansion, the current playground is not accessible um in terms of the play equipment, in terms of not just for kids, but for caregivers as well. Um and one of the things on that, this playground, because I worked um specifically with Cassie on this before Kevin joined the project, is we really pushed back on the play equipment manufacturers to make this playground incredibly, not just ADA compliant, but really inclusive because it is such a, such an important playground and such an important park. Um and so we really pushed back. And when we look at the layout of the spaces and the amount of ramps that get um kids and caregivers to multiple levels of all of the play equipment, those ramps take up more space than the previous playground did. So in order to be able to expand that accessibility, that also helps to fill in some of those spaces that Kevin was talking about. So I did want to share that there is a significant increase in accessibility in this playground, um and that does have a space implication.
I'm going to add just one more comment. I know we're at the end of the time that we have for this hearing and you guys are tired. Cassie, um the next time we see this, it would be awesome if you could give some views from the rest of the park.
Yeah.
Even if they're just like small massing vignettes so that we can really understand not only the, the size of the original playground that you're looking at, that Brad already mentioned that, but we also need to look at the views of this from further away, and I don't think I've asked for that in staff comments yet, so.
Yep.
We don't really have a sense from you yet, as, except for that one entrance um drawing that you've done. Like what, what is this fence around this going to look like? And, and what is it going to look like from multiple places in the park? Keeping in mind pastoral landscapes that need to be preserved, so um sorry, Brad, you're probably just going to say the same thing as I just said.
Okay, I appreciate it. I'm going to ask that we wrap this one up. Um we're going on three hours. I know commissioners, some of, some commissioners would like to have dinner before it's time for bed. So I think, I hope you guys have gotten helpful comments.
Yes.
We look forward to seeing you at design review on.
Thank you so much.
It's been tremendous. Thank you all so much.
Uh recognize Liz Sherva and just say, ask if there are some staff updates before we move on to our German.
Just quickly, our next hearing is on November 25th. Design review I have, starting at four, we'll see if we need the full two hours before our business hearing at six. But just as a reminder, that is the week of Thanksgiving. So please take that into consideration and RSVP using the RSVP tracker so we can ensure that there's quorum. And that would be the most important thing for that meeting.
Appreciate that. Thank you. I'm going to skip over my normal request for any commissioner comments or, or updates. I hope we get to that the next time. I'm sure we will. Commissioner Baraducci, we'll see you again, right? Before, before the end of the year. Yes. I am going to ask if there is a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion, Jeffrey Henny.
Thank you. And is there a second, please? I think I saw David Baraducci with his real hand.
Sorry, I didn't, I'll second. I have, I was muted.
Thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.